We will now call to order a special meeting of the Glendale City Council on July 30th, 2013 at 3:26 PM. We will call.
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
I am here. May we have your report?
The agenda for the July 30, 2013, special public meeting of the city council was posted on Thursday, July 25, 2013, on the bulletin board outside of City Hall.
Thank you. Next.
At Item 1, it's a public hearing, Director of Community Development, regarding proposed amendments to GMC Chapters 30.26 and 30.33 related to signage at the Glendale Galleria and the Americana at Brand. At 1A is an ordinance for introduction, amending Chapters 30.26, advertising signage overlay zone, and 30.33 signs. At 1B is an ordinance for introduction, amending the zoning map.
Okay, so two ordinances for introduction, and just so I don't forget, I'll open the public hearing. Mr. Chauvin.
Yes, sir. Several years ago, the council had the foresight and wisdom to establish the advertising signage overlay zone, or ASOS. The time has come, I think, where the market and technology have gone beyond what the ASOS has allowed to do under the terms of the municipal code, and so with the advent of a request from some of our partners in the downtown district, we are presenting to you requested and recommended changes to that existing overlay zone for your consideration. Mr. Foy will give you the staff presentation.
Mr. Foy. Thank you. This concerns alterations to the advertising signage overlay zone that was approved a little over three years ago. At that time, the city council created a new zoning category of overlay zones which had qualifying characteristics for those areas which were eligible to receive such an overlay zone, and focused on having a major commercial activity center of over a million square feet. So as of this time, the Galleria and the Americana area is the only one that is eligible for that zone in the city. No regulations for the signs, and we amended the zoning map to place the overlay zone on those districts of the downtown specific plan, and in addition, the zone map amendment had further exhibits which showed the exact locations of those signs. Now we have before you proposed revisions that were applied for by the Americana brand and general growth. The major changes is that they would allow non-accessory, which is to say off-site signage, to be placed on those zones, on the signs in those zones, and it would allow digital signage. It would expand the types of signs that are located, that can be permitted under the ASOZ in addition to those that are normally allowed by the sign ordinance. And again, amend the zoning map to show the new locations for those signs. The off-site signage would allow products that are sold outside of the overlay zone altogether, whether it be tickets to the Tour de France, or visit Las Vegas. The way it is written now is that only off-site signage could be allowed only on wall signs, which would exclude ground signs, and which would exclude banners. And it is subject to a mandatory development agreement that would specify revenue-sharing terms before these off-site signage could be implemented. This is an exhibit to the zone map amendment which shows where the signs would be for the Galleria. Almost all of these, these were all previously approved, actually, in the March 2010 amendments. And they include signs on the bridge over Central Avenue. For the Americana, this is quite hard to read at the scale, but you have before you 11-by-17 exhibit which shows the locations, and these consist largely of wall signs in existing places. A new wall sign would be behind the Jewel City Diner, facing the Galleria entrance. On Central Avenue, in the area between the main driveway and the Galleria parking structure, would be five banners that would be hung like blade signs. And probably the other significant new type of sign would be ground signs, which we place in the public right-of-way and along the private area of the Americana, which would be about 16 feet high at a maximum and 3 feet wide. And these would function mostly as directory signs or as directional signs to parking and valet. In addition, there would be one similar sign placed in the median in Brand Boulevard showing turn here for valet. As I said, we will allow animated or digital signs. Right now, it is written that it must be a wall sign, that it can change the image only every eight seconds at a minimum. There would have to be a transition period of one second. It could have any sound effects or projecting elements, and cannot be brighter than the ambient light levels. And as I said, the other sign types are banners and ground signs. In addition, there's one canopy sign, which would be placed on a canopy which will extend from the new entrance to Nordstrom's on Brand Boulevard. As you may be aware, there is, on Brand Boulevard, there will be tenant space cut out to provide a pedestrian passageway to Nordstrom. There will be a canopy over that, and a sign placed on top of that. And other amendments are just miscellaneous revisions to sign chapter to facilitate and implement these changes.
If I may add, Mr. Mayor, the canopy sign would be on Colorado over the passageway. Brand?
Yes.
Okay.
Does that conclude here? Yes, sir. That's what I asked yesterday, if you could get me a blow-up. Yes. From those vertical signs. Very good. The print's too small to read. All I want is a sample of what they're gonna...
Are those ones on central?
No. It's the one you see the most of, the most pictures of, but I couldn't read a typical what it's gonna look like. Truth be told, they're still working on the exact graphics. Well, I understand. I just wanted a sample type that looked like a map of the Galleria. Okay. But I want to know, so these are indicated on the map? Is that all? There's nothing down here, right? I think the final graphics are yet to be settled. I could probably have the help, could speak more directly to that. I'm just curious in reviewing them. I just wanted to, I assume that's what that's for. Okay. Yeah, but that's just locations. It doesn't show. Is this supposed to be this? I assume that's what this is. Yes, sir. What is here is this. Yes. Okay. Gotcha. That's all that's on. Okay. Okay, that makes sense. You'll be able to stop and read it and know which direction to go. Thank you for getting that. My colleagues have any questions? This time, I'll ask questions or comments. I'll ask what else wants to. Just a general comment, a couple things. It's nice to know the Americana and the Galleria, the Americana and the Galleria are working so close together nowadays, as opposed to being adversaries in the past. I like what I see on both sides of the street. Just a personal opinion, because I don't know marketing, but 40 signs seems like overkill. But I'm, like I said, I'm not a market person, marketing person, and I guess all of these will help tell people where to go once they get to the site, because I think most people know where the Americana and the Galleria is by now. One thing I'm trying to differentiate, it appears there's going to be now three valet service locations. First valet is underneath from Central. That valet is now closed. I assume it will open again in the near future? Well, let me finish up. Then the second one, which is not mentioned, is the one that's currently operating on Caruso Avenue. It doesn't indicate it on the map, and it's still there. Third, you have the valet on Brand that goes through to Nordstrom. And looking at Sign 12, which is on Page 12, you have the vertical Nordstrom sign, and you have the shelter off of Brand. That's a valet station, but those drawings do not indicate at all that is a valet. Signs that you have are up at the corner of Caruso Avenue, and they indicate valet down Caruso Avenue, for going to Nordstrom's. So it would seem there'd have to be some signage on Brand where you're creating the new valet to tell people that are coming down Brand, that never been there before, that there's the valet they can go to, they don't have to go down Caruso Avenue.
Like you said, one at Nordstrom's, one at Caruso.
Yeah. But the only, the only standing on the ground sign that there is shows the valet parking down Caruso Avenue where it is now. So if I'm driving down there and I'm new to the town, I'm gonna turn there. I'm not gonna go head to the valet further down on Brand. So it would seem you'd have to adjust the signage some, like Nordstrom's valet down there, and take it off the main sign, and not tell people to go down Caruso Avenue, necessarily go to Nordstrom. One's just as close to the other, but what's the value of having it down there if you're not gonna use it? That was only a major thing. I hope that the standalone signs that are on public right-of-way, that they're cleared with staff as to location, because you don't want it interfering with the walkways the people are on. Couple of them look like they're kind of far out, but I understand these are renderings, and the exact locations will be determined by Americana and staff before placement. I'm curious to see how this is all gonna help, but I said I don't know marketing, and I guess this'll really help. I know we will have a few people down here in the evening hours after they're in saying there wasn't gonna be any signage outside, and now we have it. And I understand the major centers like this all over have plenty of signage outside to let people know what's inside, so I have no problem with that. You're an economic generator to this community, so within reason, we gotta let you go ahead and do it. It looks like a few places you were already putting the formwork up. Maybe I'm wrong, but what if we didn't vote for this? You'd be in a pickle. That's about it. The major thing was the valet in front of Nordstrom's. Otherwise, go ahead. Mr. Quintero?
I assume this same type of sign program will be available across the street at the, whatever that development is called, I forgot. The Frog's? The Marketplace?
No. No.
It's a new ownership.
This type of signage, especially the ones on the public right-of-way, and a lot of the signs that are classified here are restricted to the ASOZ, and the ASOZ, in order to be incorporated in the ASOZ, you need to meet certain minimum requirements, and I believe it was 1 million square feet of retail or commercial that...
All right, well, look, that to me doesn't make sense. Both the Marketplace and some of these other developments sort of turn inward, like the Galleria, we should be able to do the same thing with them. Should be able, from the sidewalk, to be able to focus on what's available in the development.
With the new ownership of that property, if they decide to be part of the ASOZ, they can make an application, and then that will be subject to review and approval by the, recommendation by the planning commission and you, and that might require some of the minimum requirements to be changed and adjusted in order to allow that to happen. We think that, at this point, we think that's a policy discussion for the future for the city council. We are not making any recommendation on that at this moment.
All right, well, I'm prepared to support this, but I would hope that with the new ownership and any plans they might have, or with the Marketplace, existing ownership, they come up, they have new tenants, they have a reason to want to do a program like this. I don't see why it will apply in one part of the downtown and not in the other.
Brings up one more, Mr. Gani. I forget, where do we stand on the universal language for parking whatever downtown? The color, the pattern, all that? Did we finalize that?
You're talking about the directional signs for the downtown...
Directional, because...
The park, the palette that you chose for the city's own directional signs is distinct from those, and at this moment, the funding that we had set aside at the time from redevelopment agency funding is gone. So, but that is different, and if once the funding comes...
Different than these.
Well, that's subject to personal interpretation, but I really liked the ones that you picked for the city's own directional signage very much.
Because some of the signs say where to park, but they're gonna be different than the where to park outside of this zone.
Right.
It's too bad they don't all blend together. Some people don't get confused with the color patterns. Just a comment. Any other comment? Mr. Najarian.
I like the signs, and the number of signs, and the different types of signs that are being proposed to be permitted in the overlay zone are fine. This is a very popular retail area. I think it will serve the customers, our guests, very well, because there's a, quite a few, number of shops, new ones coming in all the time. I like the illuminated, is that the correct terminology? The illuminated signs? I like the fact that this can be a, we can almost use this as a pilot for other illuminated signs which may go up throughout the city, and I think people will see that they are very high-quality, very flexible. I also like the ability to insert public service announcements or citywide information graphics on those signs every so often. Certainly, flexibility is the key to that. So I'm very much in favor of all of it. The only thing I'm not in favor of, not that I'm not in favor of, but when I look at the, when I look at the splendor of the Americana and the attention to detail, these tenant signs seem to stick out like that monolith in 2001 Space Odyssey. You know, that scene where there's that landscape and there's that "ba-da." I mean, it's sort of, it's very industrial, and what was the name? We described the library, there was that type of...
Brutalist.
Brutalist, a very brutalist, where the Americana is much more Renaissance and much more, do you know what I'm talking about? Someone give me some support here from the planning staff.
From what I'm hearing, you're saying that the signage and what tends to be more contemporary modern here may not be completely in sync with the Americana's more traditional architecture and look. And I, you know, we'll leave that up to the applicant, because I know they have cards in to talk about why they chose this. Marketing is a big part of this, and I'm assuming they have some answers for that.
I'm just getting a sense of visual cacophony when I see these. But far be it from me to dictate my, I have always said I've got the worst taste in design, but aside from that, I mean, that's just a little detail. I'm poking some fun at Mr. Lemo, because he deserves it once in a while. I think the signs are great. This is where we should have the signs. Folks are coming in, visitors, this is our showcase region, and let's let them go at it, within reason, of course, and I think this is within reason.
Mr. Friedman, and then the speakers. I forgot. I'm sorry.
First, let me say to the Galleria representatives that are here, that mall is looking great. Looking awesome. I was out of town for three weeks, and I drove by on Central, and I just about hit the car in front of me. I said, wow, is this looking impressive? So, good job. I have a comment, and it's actually similar to Mr. Najarian's. If there was ever a place for a digital sign, it's those wayfinding signs. If there was ever a place to invest in interactive signage, it's those wayfinding signs. Mr. Quintero will back me up, that when you're in Korea and other countries, all over their major cities, they have these wayfinding signs that are the same shape as your sign, usually a little taller, that have lights running up and down them, graphic displays that really catch your eye, and you can walk up and you can ask it for restaurants, you can ask it for shoe shops, you can ask it for whatever you want, and it'll tell you, it'll give you a map. And if there was ever a place to put something like that in the downtown, it's the Americana and Galleria to show, so people can actually ask the sign, where is Bloomingdale's, where is whatever shop they want to go to. Also, it would just look great, and it would catch people's eye, and then you wouldn't have to keep swapping out signs when you get a new store in. You would be able to just promote that store on some kind of a running crawl, and you could really have fun with the graphics and do something spectacular that would just add to the already overwhelming excitement at both of the establishments. I know it's an investment, but I think that, given those signs are gonna be there for an awfully long time, it's something that could create excitement and catch attention, and it can be a real signature of both, of the Americana. So that's something I would suggest. And the other thing is, I would love to see one of these signs, or an extra sign, be just dedicated to our downtown, to wayfinding in the downtown for public buildings. So if somebody wanted to know where the Alex was, the library, the adult recreation center, bicycle parking, other amenities like that, they would be able to find that on your property with your branded logos on it as a public service. So that's something that I would like to ask to see if you are willing to do. It could be one of your existing signs, or I would approve a additional sign if you would be willing to do that. I think it would be great for the downtown. You're very tapped into the downtown bid, to the Alex, and so it's something that I think would be really a benefit for the whole downtown. Obviously, not for private establishments, but for, you know, for public benefit, even things like where the buses are, you know, things that people are confused about in the downtown that would just add to the experience for pedestrians and for visitors. So those are my two suggestions. I'm glad, actually, that I did mention it now, because I can, now you have a moment to think about it, and you can get up and tell me why it will or won't work. Hopefully, it will.
And that reminded me of one other thing, the crossover bridge on Central. If there's any place where you wanted a moving screen to advertise events downtown, that would be it. I forget what we...
They have it.
Voted, well, it's not there yet.
That's their proposal. It's behind me.
You're gonna have a digital running on Central, I hope. Well, they'll address it when they get up. Mr. Quintero, did you have another comment?
I'll give my opinion on digital signs, and signs really doesn't, isn't the correct, digital art, if you want to call it that. Obviously, there's commercial art, but like Ms. Friedman's message, not only in, I mentioned, not only in Korea, but in China, Europe. I just saw the closing of the Tour de France, where they had the entire Art de Triomphe with an LED show that was just beyond comprehension, what they were able to do on that huge, huge canvas. So in my opinion, it is art, and it's art that I think will be well-placed along Colorado, along Central, along Brand, and I'm very much in favor of it. And then, in addition to the public service messages, which I think are very important and can be negotiated by the staff, I think it's also important that the city of Glendale realize a percentage of the revenue from these very lucrative signs. I believe the standard is somewhere between 12 and 15 percent, and I wouldn't want to go any less than that. That seems to be what the standard is, and so I would hope that our participation would be in that percentage area. But I'm very much in favor of digital signs. They really liven up, and in between the countries I've been to, in between commercial messages, quite often they'll display digital art, which is just breathtaking, the kind of things that artists can do using platforms. So it's exciting. I think it's gonna add a lot of kind of color and excitement to the downtown.
I gather that the sharing on the revenue of the signs has to be negotiated yet. Correct?
As part of the proposed ordinances in front of you, there is a requirement that in order to take advantage of the provisions of this ordinance, each of the owners would have to have a development agreement with the city with the terms that Mr. Lansfam is probably better equipped to explain, but that would be a standard requirement, and they would have to follow up, applying for development agreements that would be reviewed by the planning commission and you.
Okay, so that's coming, Mr. Quintero. We'll see if, okay, Ms. Friedman?
I just wanted to say that the wayfinding signs, which I do think are important, should be both in front of the entrance of the Americana and the Galleria. I've gone, I frequent both establishments all the time, and people are constantly asking questions about how to get different places, so it's something that would be a benefit for your customers, you know, a lot of whom come from out of town.
And I guess this group can't answer it here, but people ask me, is there gonna be a median, landscape median any further up on Central, other than just that one strip below, the crosswalk? Nobody knows. Okay, that's an engineering issue.
From Colorado to Broadway, or further up?
Above the crosswalk.
At Broadway?
No, on Central, there is a median, landscape median between Colorado and the crosswalk.
No, there is not anything further north?
Further north, okay. And let's see, what else? Oh, just I hate to see businesses in the Galleria leaving Glendale. I've seen at least two in there leaving, and I've been told it's because rents are going up. I hate to see that. This is not Beverly Hills. There's a lot of people that visit the Galleria and Americana that just aren't exactly wealthy in this town. They do shop there at affordable locations, and when rents are going up and you're driving businesses out, you're telling me that you're gonna put a higher-tech company in their clothing store, something that can afford to pay the rents. I hope it works, but I'd hate to see our residents be driven out because they can't afford to shop in these beautiful places that we're creating down there. That remains to be seen. Just sad we're losing some. Okay, there's no further comments. Now the public could get a chance. Now you can answer any questions. Dave Cuthill and Rick, you're here for questions, you said. You want to take the whole thing?
Sure.
Oh, then Dave doesn't have to speak, eh?
As soon as I come up on something that's really technical and important, then he will speak.
Then you'll send for Dave.
Because it turns out I'm just a pretty face.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mayor and council and staff. First, my name is Rick Lemo, and I'm representing Caruso Affiliate...
First, my name is Rick Lemo, and I'm representing Caruso Affiliated and speaking on behalf of both Caruso Affiliated and the Americana brand and the Glendale Galleria in regards to the ASOZ. Before I do that, though, I would like to answer your last question first in regards to businesses leaving Glendale and tying it in too much to the rents. We've spent a lot of time and a lot of effort on Brand Boulevard with at least two or three different real estate companies. You're absolutely right, the rents at Americana and Galleria, and even on other places in Central have increased. However, the rents for retail first floor have remained relatively stagnant on Brand. We've asked two or three real estate agents to go out and draw companies in to bring them to Brand. And that is now finally starting to warm a little bit, and you're seeing, not only, the first step is businesses improving their business on Brand, like the gentleman who bought Farnante, and they're, they're making their improvements, but next wave we would hope to see are some newer, fresher, smaller businesses coming to Brand. So there is a place for them to settle here without the high rate.
Well, I understand. I'm talking within what we're looking at today, the Americana and the Galleria.
Right, and I think just the cost of doing business there is a little bit more expensive with the landscape and the remodeling and all. In regards to the question of 40 signs seems to be overkill, there are approximately 10 to 12 new signs, net new signs, in the new package. And that's a relatively small percentage, particularly into the groups of new people coming to Glendale. Tourism has increased in Glendale at a greater rate than we ever anticipated at this point in time, and so that signage is going to help that. Not to mention the fact we've got a great influx both at the Galleria and the Americana brand for new tenants coming to town. Michael Mina's Bourbon Steak, different, I don't want to mention, I don't want this to be a commercial for Americana, so I won't go into great detail, but we do have Bloomingdale's coming to the Galleria. The next question that you had was for Valet on Central. It is not closed, it opens only on weekends right now, our valet on Central. And we would anticipate, as need increases...
Right.
That it's, it's all going to be open. Then, of course, there is a Caruso Avenue, and there is Nordstrom. Now, part of that Nordstrom on Brand was so that Nordstrom was not in the little alleyway there that is right up against their building. We thought that it would do good for Brand and for downtown, and certainly for Nordstrom, to have more of an entrance on our, on our main street. Valet signage at Nordstrom, that hasn't been determined yet, but there is signage that's there that delineates what you do for parking. So those locations could become Nordstrom, Valet-type signage, and it will be very obvious there. And so we will be going to work on trying to make certain that we do a better job of directing that signage.
A work in progress, yes.
Yes. In regards to, you had a question in regards to right-of-way signage, and I, I wrote it down, but it says here, "Right-of-way signage, no signage outside the district." First of all, I agree with you that it is beneficial for us to have some signage outside the district, whether it be for our Alex Theater or other sort of downtown or community-type buildings, and also to let them know that there is a downtown business district. I don't know if it necessarily has to be additional, we can look into that. In regards to the more high-tech version that you've discussed, I can tell you that since May of 2012, we have been reviewing those directory signs, and it's very frustrating to hear that you've seen it work so well in other countries, because what they're displaying here in the United States, and the only one at the time they could show us that was in practice, that they wanted to use as their, their best one, was at the Cosmopolitan Hotel. And as soon as five different people touched it, it had to resync because the composition of the oils and whatever on their hands didn't work right. So I think from a feasibility standpoint, we can absolutely study it, have that goal come into place. I think we do have to go through the expense of replacing an existing sign with it, or adding another sign with the approval of staff, because in our opinions, for the last 24 months, the technology hasn't been there to work right as yet. But I think it's, it's something that we really should focus on if we're going to stay with the times.
Talk to the Korean companies.
That's what we need to do, yeah.
They really haven't nailed.
Yeah, I wish they were over here displaying. Tenant signs tend to stick out. One of the reasons that those tenant signs stick out, Councilmember Nagerian, is my time off?
Keep going, keep going.
Okay. Is because they are international signs. They're not within the attitude of, of the Americana or the architecture, or the display signage of the Americana. They are international, European, sort of, somebody used the word gruff or a little rough in nature, they are to enhance the tourist experience, to be somewhat familiar to a tourist that they can go forward, and they are standard. Those are signs that you're, you're seeing all over. We talked about the interactive wayfinding signage and for the buildings. Also, I just wanted to comment, we do have an overriding development agreement on the Americana. So we won't, we won't be renegotiating a new development agreement separately for signage. That's part of the whole package that the city... Is that your decision, or our decision?
I don't think so.
That has been what we've discussed from the very beginning, so if that is something new, that's something that would send us at least back to the drawing board a little bit.
Well, then you better go back to the drawing board, Mr. Lemo, because we're not about to impose something on one business in this city that's going to give us 12 to 15 percent of the revenue, and then have another similarly situated business that's not going to do it.
Well, we're actually doing it ahead of time. We were doing it first. We're actually giving you a percentage of our advertising revenue as part of the overall development agreement right now. We've been giving...
Yeah, how, how much have we received so far?
Yeah, we haven't received any income at all.
There's a hurdle rate that it has to...
Right, yeah. But I think that the...
Well, look, just to be clear, I don't know about the rest of the people here, but for me, I'm not going to approve a situation where one business is going to give us part of the revenue and another business doesn't. So let's make that clear, because I'll vote against the ordinance for sure, unless we have an equal playing field. And for a future business across the street on Brand or down on Central, whoever it is, I want the taxpayers of this city to realize a profit from a commercial sign, a digital commercial sign.
It's going to be tough for us to sell it to them, Frank. When they come in here and yell at us about those big signs, we're going to have, at least say, "Well, we're getting some revenue out of it."
Mr. Ochoa, do you want to explain what's happening here?
Well, the, the issue for us has been that the, the underlying development agreement is with the redevelopment agency that no longer exists. So we have to find that way forward that we believe would be a development agreement in and of itself, which would level that playing field, but also does require partnership, further partnership with Caruso and with the city. So we'd have to figure that out as we go forward with this program.
Would this release us from the development agreement that exists with redevelopment, if the state takes it over?
If the state takes it apart.
Or if the city keeps it?
Keeps what?
The development agreement that exists now.
The development agreement that exists now is with an agency that no longer exists.
So what does that mean?
Well, that means as, what you're hearing the council say is, as we move towards a, a new digital signage program in the ASOS, as it would be amended, it would be under a development agreement with the city of Glendale.
What happens to the development agreement that's in existence?
That would be as defunct as it is now on this particular term.
If I may interject, the successor agency took over the duties and obligations and, and benefits and rights of that exist, of the existing agreements, and there is an existing promissory note that Mr. Lemo was referring to that relates to the former redevelopment agency and now the successor agency, sharing in the upside after certain preferred returns are received on the commercial and the residential components of the project, that had to do with the existing project. And that was profits that would be shared with a redevelopment agency, and now that obligation flows to the Glendale successor agency. This is a program, and I think this is what Mr. Ochoa is referring to, with the city of Glendale, for purposes of a new overlay that's related to the city and new signage that's permitted by the city, and through that regulation that a new agreement is required, separate and apart from the agreement for the original development, with the Glendale redevelopment agency, the rights of which were negotiated before. So I think that's the distinction that we're looking at here. It's, it's profits that relate to the original project under that promissory note that would be shared, and this is a new overlay zone with new entitlements, and for those entitlements to be put into place, it would be a new development agreement negotiated for that purpose.
Current ASOZ is functioning under that development agreement in, in that we were told at the time that the current agreement would override, and that would, that would be under the SOZ. That's why we didn't negotiate for it when we did it the first time out.
But the current ASOZ doesn't include digital signage.
So if we didn't do digital signage, there'd be no additional charge, is that correct?
Under the, under the signage that you have today, the existing agreement would live, an old precedence. To the extent that we change and enlarge and expand the scope of the ASOZ, it would require a different development agreement.
All right, so then I think what I would suggest is that we would go ahead and amend everything except for the digital signage, and then come back to see what that's really going to cost. Because I, I don't think any successful business in Glendale would necessarily buy a pick on the poke. You have no idea what the investment's going to be in the digital signage, no idea what the marketplace is going to demand in that. So maybe what we do is we do everything except for digital signage today, and we can come back and look at the digital signage when we have numbers.
But to the extent that you have a development agreement that would have to be approved in order to put into effect the terms of this expansion of the ASOZ, you have the opportunity to do everything that you're talking about on a going-forward basis.
But we can't do it without knowing what it's going to cost.
If I may, Ms. Mayor, you did...
This is the first time, by the way, this is ever happened this year.
Ms. Mayor, the City Council has the opportunity to adopt the proposed ordinance as it is. The ordinance has language that makes the presence of a development agreement a prerequisite for the participants before they can take advantage of the provisions of the ASOZ. In other words, you can approve the ordinance as proposed, and either the Americana and the Galleria can take advantage of it by entering into a development agreement or choose not to. That, that will not preclude them. There's no forcing them to take advantage of it if they don't want to.
Okay, well, we've heard from one business. Is there someone here from the Galleria? I'd like to hear from them.
Good afternoon, members of the council, Mayor. I'm Dave Cuthill with General Growth Properties. It's a nice opportunity to be back up here in front of you again. Appreciate all of your consideration for what's, what's in front of you right now, and I appreciate many of the comments here. As you may or may not know, we have been working with staff to negotiate a, an agreement that would be a revenue-sharing agreement for digital signage. We are willing to pursue that. We do support the provisions in front of you for the wayfinding signage and the digital signage within the ASOS. We appreciate all the comments that have come forth today. I'm happy to try to answer some questions on behalf of the Galleria. We do appreciate the comments of, your appreciation of what's going on at the Galleria and in throughout the district. We're obviously very excited about it, looking forward to coming to completion here in the late third quarter, early fourth quarter of this year, and appreciate all the assistance that's occurred to date. So be happy to answer questions that you might have.
You generally feel comfortable with the 12, 15 percent revenue sharing?
I think that's in the range of what we've been discussing with, with staff.
When is Bloomingdale's opening?
Pardon me?
Bloomingdale's opening?
They haven't officially opened and announced their date yet, but it'll be late third quarter, early fourth quarter. If you've seen the sign on their building now, they do say that they're opening in 2013, which is great news for all of us.
Thank you.
I mean, we, we'd be happy to, we've actually talked internally, we'd love to get you through and give you another tour. Insiders, look at the center, if you, if you'd like that.
Looking good.
Thank you.
Okay. These are two ordinances for introduction.
Okay, well, look, I feel generally comfortable with the Wayfair signs and all the rest of it. The Galleria is committed to a 12, 15 percent revenue sharing, if you want to call it that, so, okay. And then the Americana will have to make the decision with, and by the way, for me, it's about billboards, the digital billboards that will be seen by the public, they'll be sold to advertisers, et cetera, et cetera. That is what I feel the presidents of this city need to participate in that, in that income stream.
Okay, so you're going to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Oh, I better close the public hearing first. You've introduced the ordinance to one A and B.
I'll introduce that one A and B.
Okay. We have no other businesses. Is there a motion adjourned for the council?
Go move.
Second?
Stand adjourned.